Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, March 11, 2013. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council members Lennon.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Galloway.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a full house this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. And I guess I would like to just ask for one change, and that is, I know we have a lot of folks here regarding the public hearing for the small winemaker license, and I was thinking maybe we could flip that and do that before the presentation if council is okay with that, so that they don't have to stay for the whole rest of the meeting.
I move we accept the agenda as amended. Support.
Any other discussions? Madam Clerk?
Council members Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So, let's go to our public hearing, which is a public hearing on the small winemaker license, KDS LLC, and they're going to be doing business at 327 West Nine Mile Road. So, the first thing we need to do is the public hearing, and so, the public hearing is open. Does anyone from the public have any comments, questions about this item?
On behalf of KDS, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come before you tonight. My name is Rick Perkins. I'm the licensing consultant that works for Carlin Edwards Brown, P LLC, that's representing KDS LLC in their efforts to get a Michigan small winemaker's license, as well as their permits with the federal United States Department of Treasury Alcohol and Tobacco Tax and Trade Bureau. So, I'm here representing them. Ms. Schramm, the principal and sole member of KDS, is also here, along with his family. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, either on the small winemaker license itself, or on Mr. Schramm's operation, and how he's going to run it. The small winemaker license is a bit limited. If I could just briefly describe it. Issued by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, it allows him to manufacture wine, in this case, it's mead, or honey wine, who may be familiar with, or may not be familiar with. It's something that's an up-and-coming field. It's been around forever, but it hasn't had a lot of publicity throughout the years. It's a small winemaker. He's licensed to manufacture the wine, including mead. He's allowed to sell it directly to the consumers for either on-premises or takeout. He's allowed to sell it to licensed wholesalers, who in turn can distribute it to other retail licensees throughout the state, and if he chooses, he's allowed to sell it directly to retail licensees if he wants. The only alcohol he can sell is the alcohol that he manufactures, is the wine he manufactures. No other beer, no other spirits, no other alcoholic beverages whatsoever. It's a non-quota license, so it has no negative impact on the on-premises license available in the city of Ferndale. It is highly regulated by both the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and the federal government, the alcohol tax, alcohol and tobacco tax and Trade Bureau. From the collection of taxes, registration of products, the filing of operation records and what have you, it's highly regulated. Mr. Schramm is actually a published author. If any of you are into mead wines, you might have read a couple of his books on the matter. He's very highly regarded in the mead industry, and now he wants to make a living of it in New York City. And I think it's a business that I think will fit very well with a Ferndale small business plan, so.
Could you bring samples? So, immediately after the public portion of this, I'll give Ken an opportunity to come up and introduce himself, but thank you. Did anybody from council have questions of Rick? Anyone else from the public like to address us on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this, and now this is the opportunity. And Ken, why don't we, you come on up and tell us a little bit about your business?
Thank you, Mayor Coulter. I appreciate the opportunity to address all of the members of the council this evening. We're respectfully requesting the issuance of a resolution in support of our application for a small winemaker license with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. I've sent along some background information on the business, but at this point, I think it's my obligation to help you understand the human side of our business and understand why Schramm's mead will be good for Ferndale. The food and beverage industry in the U.S. today is changing dramatically. Consumers are moving away from mega corporation-produced, lowest common denominator food and drink towards smaller, tastier products produced by thoughtful entrepreneurs who concentrate on local ingredients, high quality, sustainability, and participation in the communities that support them. It's a craft movement, and there are craft brewers and craft meat makers and craft pizzerias. The craft beverage alcohol trade is based on a philosophy that it is more satisfying and more sensible to have a small quantity of a high-quality beverage than a large quantity of a lower-quality beverage. It comes down to this, eating and drinking better, pardon me, eating and drinking better things improves our quality of life, and Schramm's is all about quality over quantity. Craft meat is about where craft beer was in 1985 or so, and Schramm's mead will be a craft meadery, hopefully in the best sense of the word. Our goal is to see how deliciously Schramm's can make each mead we create. We will use U.S.-made ingredients, and preferably Michigan-made ingredients wherever possible. Our logo wear is made in the United States, and at our Nine Mile Road location, we will make roughly 200-gallon batches, one each month, and we will utilize another Michigan winery to produce larger batches on a contract basis that we can use for sales to restaurants, wine shops, and grocery stores. We'll sell our meats by the bottle and by the glass in our tasting room, and offer some small plates to accompany the meats, and we want to employ local people to make great meats, essentially to enhance the lives of the people that we love. It is with great pride that Jean Allison, Sarah, and I make our way into the food and beverage industry. My great-great-great-grandfather, Friedrich Schramm, arrived from Rexen, Germany in the 1850s, coming directly to Michigan, and he established a family farm in Macomb County. He fought for the Union and was injured in the Civil War, just nine years after getting to the United States. His son's farms at 23 Mile and Card Roads are still in our family, and were granted Michigan Centennial Farm status last year. The Schramm family has a 160-year history of providing food and drink to metropolitan Detroiters, and we are eager to represent the next generation of this honorable family heritage. We have another family link to this community. My mother graduated from Lincoln-Ferndale High School in the 1950s, in 1953. We're thrilled at the opportunity to do business in Ferndale, and I'd welcome any questions you might have about Schramm's mead.
Thank you very much. Council, questions? How much of the space, this space is the old record time store, right?
Correct. The record collector, yeah, the old record.
How much of the space will be dedicated to retail versus dine-in or sit-in?
It will be roughly divided into one-third, one-third, and one-third. The front third of the business will be the tasting room area. The center third will be the meadery, and we'll do some small food prep in there as well. And then the rear third of the building will be storage for mead that's been prepared, or for ingredients and honey as they move in for us to use in production.
Okay.
About 600, 600, 600.
Good. Well, a motion would be in order.
I've moved to recommend that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approve of the request from KDS LLC for a small winemaker license to be located at 327 West Nine Mile Road, Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan. Support?
It's been moved and supported. Any further questions or comments?
Just thank you for choosing Ferndale. Appreciate you coming here.
It's a natural choice.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Your future customers, we're just, I'm sorry. Next order of business would be a presentation by the city manager on parking up.
Thank you all very much. As you know, on February 25th, we were able to give a preliminary report on where we are with parking, and I will complete that day with more action items, if you will. 14 more machines have been ordered and will be installed this week. In talking with DPW and Traffic and Safety, we are confident that all of the machines will be in place, checked, and ready to go for a open parking redo, if you will, for Monday, March 25th. I'm going to talk a little, before I go into today, I'm going to talk a little bit more about some other action steps that we have taken. We've also been evaluating our lighting options as it relates to the machines and the concern for safety lighting, and we've found a couple of ideas and prototypes that we're actually waiting for, so that we can see what they look like on the machine, how it works. We don't want to make a rushed decision just to put some lighting on there, but we do feel that we have two, I think, two different options that we'll be able to look at. Not only will it address the lighting, and it'll be a multi-use, if you will, we're also going to raise the poles for the park here will be taller, so people can see those more, as well as illuminated. So, we'll be safety lighting as well as lighting up the machines as well.
What kind of lighting are you?
We're looking at solar-operated machines that will be able to move with the machines as well, so just as the machines are very portable, so will our lighting options. So, it'll be an addition that will be not on the machine, but right next to the machine that will look a little bit, depending on which prototype we go with, it's going to raise the, we'll have the bar taller for the pay here, which will also be lit, and then a floodlight that will show and shine, and make sure that people feel safe and comfortable when paying for parking in the darker hours. So, again, we wanted to wait, that we would like to see what they look like and how they fit the machine before we make a decision on how that will work. But we do feel like we found some alternatives that will address any concerns that there are for lighting. We also have, all of the keyboards will be installed with lights as well. That seemed to be another general complaint, was that the keyboard sometimes was too dark, so we have a lighting alternative for that that will actually be, they're being put in the machines as we speak. So, with that, though, where we are is that we are confident that on Monday, March 25th, that we will be able to reopen and do a parking redo, if you will. We'll have enough machines, if we feel we will, to open parking back up. But because we do have the lighting that we're waiting for, and we want to make the right decisions, what I would ask is that on Monday, when we open back up, that we will only enforce for the month of, the rest of March and through April until 8:00 at night, so that way that there's no question on safety or anything of that nature. Right now, it's light, by the time that happens, it'll be light at beyond 8:00, so we should be okay at that point.
Wait, so just to reiterate, so you're saying through the end of April, we would enforce till 8:00 P.M.?
Only until 8:00 P.M.
While it's light, because we won't have all of the light to.
Correct. And we're still working through the prototype of when we'll get the lights in, so that could actually end up being extended again, depending on when the lighting can be addressed. But we want to make sure that. It also gives us an opportunity, actually, to do more of a softer rollout, if you will, since it tends to get very busy after 8:00 on the weekends as well, so it also serves as an opportunity to assess the changes we've made. And that's really important, to know that these machines are very portable. We only had a couple of weeks, really a true week of data, to really take a look at the parking behavior and where people were going. So, please note that as we go through this process, just because we put the machines there now doesn't mean that we're committed to those locations. So, if we find, again, that there's other locations that are being underutilized or overutilized, that we can move those, which is really a benefit to that system. So, we will continually monitor that. So, again, just because we moved, um, right now, or added in those certain locations, we're still going to be watching always, not even just in the next month, but always looking at where is the activity, and do we have enough machines in certain locations. So, again, I think that this, we feel very comfortable that this is going to help the line situation from being as excessive as it was. Again, it was never intended to be 10, 12 people deep. I'm not saying that during peak times in a peak location on a Saturday night, then there might not be two or three people in line, but more than likely, that's going to be, those situations are going to be removed by the amount of machines that we have placed there. And again, we will continue to monitor and move as that see fits. And it's very important to know that we will continue, not just because of what happened, but continually taking feedback from our businesses, our visitors, and our residents, that the city manager's office will definitely be taking that into consideration and making sure that we make modifications where we can. So, I do, you know, in talking to Traffic and Safety on Friday, feel that we should be able to go live again on Monday, March 25th. However, we did agree that if anything happens, or we feel that somehow we're not prepared, that we will back off on that again, and make sure that it's open and we have those machines. So, we will be going from 20 machines to 34 machines, which will make a significant difference, I think, in some locations, some parking lots. We've tripled and quadrupled the amount of machines, and that should really address a lot of those issues. So, that is one update. Also, back on February 25th, council also directed me to bring back some recommendation on rates. Before we start that conversation, is there any questions that council has regarding implementation that I just talked about and opening on March 25th?
Dan?
A couple. You mentioned you're actually going to raise the meters themselves?
No, the pay here signs.
Just the signs.
They're going to go taller.
Okay, but not the machine?
No. Machines are at a level for ADA and.
That's what I was concerned, yeah, okay. So, when, how are we going to communicate that if we only enforce till 8:00 P.M.?
We'll address, we'll do signage with that, as well as we talked about having some kind of placard, or something that we can put over the machine that's a little prettier than these barricades, recognizing that people are going to take it, but we will, we will address that, but we would like to put something on the machine at 8:00 that signifies that it's, we're no longer enforcing, and we'll do some signage. What's really nice, one of the things with this lighting that we're going to do, it's actually going to be on a timer, so that when the enforcement hours are over, the lights will go off, and that will be another signal that you don't need to come to the machine anymore, which will be really helpful, I think, especially in the evenings.
And then will we, will the ambassadors back out on Monday, March 25th?
Yes, I will be meeting with all of them and talking about ways they can help people at the machines, and help using it as learning opportunities, and we'll be collecting other volunteers as well who are interested.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Well, mine was more about communications, and how are we, how is the city going to communicate differently than it has before, about the improvements to the system and informing our business owners and visitors and residents?
One of the things that our office is working on, Joe is working on, a communications plan that will not only just communicate what's going on, but provide toolkits for the businesses that can distribute to their customers, or to use when people come in, on how to use the machines, questions that come up, why we moved these machines, and things of that nature. So, we're actually working on finishing that communications plan in over the next couple of weeks. We have two weeks till we open. You're going to see a lot more information. They've actually worked on a how-to video as well, on how to use the machines as well. Sorry, Joe, and thanks to Marnie for all her help. So, we hope to, it's not going to be just suddenly on Monday, the 25th, oh, the machines are back open. We're roaming over the course of the next two weeks. We'll see a lot of stuff on social media. We're also going to ask all business owners to help us engage on their social media and post the things that we post as well, and just really try to help facilitate that partnership of really providing a toolkit, if you will, of how they can have those discussions with their customers on why we have the machines. And we've also been engaging with a lot of business owners as well, of tell me what happened, what's going on, what is, some suggestions that you have, and things of that nature. So, I think there's a lot more active participation all the way around.
The lighting, I assume it also comes out of the parking fund, right?
Yes.
So, it's funded through that. Estimate of cost?
Not yet. We're waiting on the prototypes.
Okay. All right.
But they will be solar-operated as well, so they will, they won't take electricity, and they'll be portable.
Yep. But they won't do the whole die-down?
Yes, what we're hoping is actually, I see there's two things. We're looking at timers and/or, I think they call it photo, what do you call it? Photocells? Where it will just only come on when it's needed?
Yeah.
But then also, it will time itself out when it's not. So, obviously, at 10:00 at night, it's dark, so.
And if somebody else is in a similar situation for their lighting?
I think they're helping us with this. A lot of the other communities didn't have the lighting issues that we had, so their streetlights were adequate, but they've also had this type of system for a long time, and so, you know, that could also be part of that. So, we're, I think, leading the way we said, if we get this patent that we want to cut from it, actually, so they're working with us.
All right. So, any other questions on the mechanics of it, before she talks about potential rates?
Okay, great. Again, as requested, council was interested in us bringing back recommendations on what to do with the rates. As we know, there was a lot of discussion on whether or not the rates that we set were where we wanted to go with our parking rates. So, we worked closely with, you know, people on the DDA board, and talking to council and things of that nature, determine the best course of action that we could have as it relates to rates. There, of course, is a myriad of options. I mean, obviously, you can, we can pick and choose, cherry-pick whatever we wanted as it relates to bringing back recommendations, but we felt that at this point, that we wanted to focus on two options. One, option one, is to go and delay implementation of the new rates that we had just set, and go back to the 50 cents per hour, or just keep them at the rates that were just recommended. To just go and arbitrarily pick numbers, it doesn't make sense to do that, because we, you know, we did sit down and try to bring back rates that were, that were set for this particular parking system. So, by doing that, they would be very arbitrary. We would really need to sit down and go back and talk to the technical support that we had for that. So, when really having that conversation, we felt at this time that it would be best to recommend that council consider actually delaying implementation of the new rates and going back to the 50 cents per hour. And also, as well as enforcement, we did change from 9:00 to 11:00. We would ask that, just during this time, to go ahead and go back to the original enforcement hours, starting at 10:00. However, would like them to, like you to entertain the motion of actually staying, keeping enforcement until 11:00. So, that would be the only thing that we would ask to keep modified. And then also, too, that would mean that employee parking passes, because we're not adjusting the rates, would go back, stay where they currently are, which is averaging out to be $20 a month right now, because we have a yearly pass, but we're not going to have a year right now, so $20 per month.
Passes also.
Would be to say yes, because those new pass rates were based on new parking rates. So, just to clarify, just so we understand where we're at, is recommending that parking rates go back to delay implementation of the new rates that are currently established to, back to 50 cents per hour, and enforcement going from 9:00 to 11:00 to 10:00 to 11:00, as well as parking passes would then remain as they currently are at $240 per year and/or $20 a month.
In relation to the hours of operation, the enforcement hours, you mean after May 1st, right?
Yeah, sorry. And please note that through May 1st, it would be only until 8:00. And what I would anticipate is bringing back in the second meeting in April, where we are with lighting, I may ask you to extend that longer, but for this motion, you could do that at May 1st, 2013.
And we really need to address the rates, because if you go live with the new system on Monday morning, then that's before we meet again.
Yes.
You really do need to address this this evening.
If you can.
If that's the launch date, which makes sense. And I assume Monday's a good day, because it's the beginning of the week, maybe it's better to launch on Monday than Friday?
We agreed that there would, that we wanted at least Monday through Wednesday to work out any kinks, so that's why we probably could open next week on Thursday, but that would just be, that's not the way we want to open. So, we wanted to wait until Monday, where we had that opportunity to really assess what's going on, and to address any concerns that come up.
Comments or questions of council on rates and/or hours?
I'd be happy to offer a motion to that effect.
A motion would be in order, then?
I would move that we authorize free parking through March 24th, 2013, and that we adjust parking rates back to 50 cents per hour, and enforcement hours to be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 P.M. through May 1st, 2013, and between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 P.M. thereafter, with parking passes going back to the rates charged prior to the implementation of Park Bus.
Support. Moved by Lennon, I mean, moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Discussions or comments on that motion?
I support it. The one comment I would want to make, in the goal session that we had prior to meeting here today, to the regular council session, parking did come up very high in addressing the long-term, future functional issues we have in the parking system. And I think the data in this new system is so superior, it'll give us a better expectation of what comes in, and how we prepare for that need for parking expansion as we go forward, and plot a more accurate map.
I concur with Councilman Martin. After, after talking to business owners and residents, I think we need to take a step back and reevaluate the revenues, what we're going to use the revenues for, what does the community value, and what do we want to invest in? And I know a lot of people want a parking deck, but I don't think we're clear on how to best get there yet, and need some more time to do that. And going back to what Councilman Martin said, is that the city did also include some strategies to figure out and address the specific parking deck problem, and included in the goals for the year. So, and I also think it will give us a better opportunity to better explain why, and what the rates, if we do increase rates in December again, what the purpose actually is for, and have better buy-in, community buy-in for it. That's my real interest.
And, right, so just to reiterate what you said, because there's two things we need to do. I don't want to give anyone the false impression that I believe we can keep rates at 50 cents per hour forever.
Right.
And expand parking, build a deck, whatever we ultimately decide we need to do, which we need to do something, because we have a parking problem in Ferndale, and we can't add capacity at 50 cents an hour. But this does buy us time to analyze the revenues that we receive, the data that these machines tell us, and make a better informed decision. And at the same time, we need to have the conversation among ourselves, with the DDA and others, the community, about what that expanded capacity looks like, and be more specific about it. And I think this time will allow us to do that as well. So, I support the motion as well. Other comments on this motion? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item passes.
I just want to clarify, I don't know if it was in your motion or not, but I do need a motion for to continue free parking through March 24th. It wasn't there. This double checking.
But do we need to, if something happens that on the 25th, we're not ready, we don't meet again, does that motion cover your ability to continue free parking?
I will just turn that over to the attorney.
Because I don't want you to be looking at the 25th, and we're not there yet.
No, I wouldn't turn it back on.
Turn this on, okay.
I would, no, we wouldn't turn it back on, and we would readjust and make some kind of.
Another week or two.
Our commitment has been, we're not going to turn it back on until we're ready, and so.
It's clear.
Is that clear, to the attorney? Thank you.
Well, actually, that leads to a question, and this is, I mean, I can ask this now. If we were ever to do, is there a way to, and maybe now, today's not the day to do that, but to look at an option where at the discretion of the city manager, we can offer free parking? For instance, if we wanted to do a free Thursday, a random free Thursday for shopping, can we, how does, maybe that's something you can look into.
Yeah, I will provide a report for you, and I think that would, is something that could be done, again, through council's resolution. Right now would not be something that the city manager would have authority to do of her own accord.
Got you.
Thank you.
Anything else, April?
No, I, again, I can't tell you how much we appreciate the patience of our business owners, our residents, and our visitors, and the businesses have been great and very gracious about offering ideas and thoughts, and just, we continue to encourage you to do that, and understand that your feedback is so valuable. We were actually, the good out of some of this is the fact that we've had some creative ideas that maybe not, maybe wouldn't have come out had this been as smooth as we wanted, which we still would have preferred, but I just, we just really encourage that, and again, thank everybody very much for their patience and understanding as we work through this process.
And I guess, like I did two weeks ago, I'm guessing some of you might be here to talk about parking. Now, actually, call the audiences is next, but I also want to call on our county commissioner to give her report, because I see her here. Oh, I was going to let them go first, Helen, but, come on up. Come on up, we'll do yours, and then we're going to open it up for the audience to speak about parking, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Commissioner.
I'm Helen Zach, your county commissioner, here to give you a monthly report on some of the things going on in the county. First of all, I want to invite students to join an art contest for the new Oakland County directory. Our county clerk, Lisa Brown, has invited students to draw something that will be put on the directory. And you can find the application, the form, the rules, on the county website, www.oakgov.com. If you go to the clerk page, you'll see rules, you can get on the directory, you can win $50 by entering this contest. I think it's a fun opportunity. Animal control. I wanted to tell you, we are making some progress, things are better, but we did introduce a few resolutions that will detail how and what you post. One of the things that people want to see is how many animals are being adopted, how many animals are going to have to be euthanized, you know, details like that. And so we're working on it, but things are better. Wanted to tell you that there is a new prescription drug plan coming. We are going to kick it off officially on April 18th. I was part of a study group last year that looked at different opportunities. We are changing providers to an organization called Coast to Coast. One of the things that's very appealing about this is that they're going to be marketing and promoting this program throughout the county so that people will actually know that they can use the program. There's also going to be expanded services, discounted dental services, and another way, things like x-rays discounted for people that don't have medical insurance. So I will be reporting back more detail as I have it. And again, we're doing public service announcements, I can't tell you more.
Maybe we could leave applications at Ferndale as well.
I will absolutely make sure that we distribute it so that all of our different nonprofits in Ferndale know about it.
Thank you.
We voted on a new 911 service plan, and I have to tell you, I read through the document and said, what is this? But we don't do it often. The last time that we adopted a new plan was in 1999. And what this plan does is it sets the stage for the 21st century. One of the things that we cannot do, you can't text in a 911 call, you can't text in a photo. And so the new system and the old system's based on telephone copper wiring. The new system and plan is to allow for different forms of communication. So imagine that you could post a picture of somebody through this whole internet system immediately, 911. So we do have the plan that's going through, setting the stage for public hearings coming. There's also a county initiative now, a public health initiative on rats, and there are posters available and things on the county website, recognizing that there is a rat problem, particularly south end where there's more density and restaurants and so forth. So I'm glad that they're trying to do some public health promotion on what you should do. I know the local communities have been very proactive, but the county's finally doing something. And that's it for this. One other thing, I know this is something that Mayor Coulter, when we talk about parks and rec, we have been receiving some grants, there has been a little bit of matching money. For those people who like to fish in county parks in the north part of the county, we are creating new fishing piers that will be accessible for people with developmental disabilities, handicaps. I'm really thinking about seniors and that you can wheelchair accessibility, things like that. So, and making the county parks easier for seniors with more benches, and this really helps facilitate.
Thank you.
Facilitate that.
Yeah, that's great.
Any questions?
Questions for Commissioner Zach. Thank you, as always, for sharing.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move to call to audience. Call to audience is 30 minutes now and more time if needed at the end of the meeting to speak on any, any item that's not on the agenda, because you'll get an opportunity to speak to that item when it comes to the agenda. You get three minutes to, just so you know, it's not a debate, so we don't speak back and forth, it's your time, your three minutes to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. So.
It's not mine.
Good evening.
It's not possible. Hello. My name is Veronica Loogic. I have spent six years as a director on the DDA board, and before that, I was a committee chair on promotions. I'm proud of what we've accomplished by working through our differences to become a team and achieve the goals set by more than 40 volunteers of business owners and residents. Although I am sad that I am not going to be reappointed as a director on the DDA board, which I know is for political reasons, not being reappointed by the mayor now allows me to speak my mind freely. I no longer have to worry about the political ramifications of my opinions, which I feel have always been in the best interest of the downtown and have too often been hijacked by the current political climate. I also feel that political agendas have deprived the downtown of some of its future potential. So moving forward from here, Ferndale downtown development is exemplary. It has set standards for excellence and has been recognized in our county and nationwide. Through careful planning and goal setting, the DDA has built a downtown where the businesses can thrive now and into the future. I will continue to be involved in that future. I have a great respect for the people that have worked so hard to get us where we are today. We have an amazing group of selfless individuals, residents and business owners who have given their time freely to propel the downtown into the future and to make it better for all, businesses and for the city. For those of you who love the downtown as much as I do, I encourage you, please get involved, get involved and be active. The synergy of strong, positive people working together, I believe, can achieve really great results, and there is proof. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to public comment, I mean, at call to audiences evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Craig Covey, live on Breckenridge Street, and I'm here for a couple of reasons, and I'm wearing two different hats tonight. I guess it's not unusual, but I'm representing Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner Jim Nash, but also speaking as a member of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. So three quick items. First, I won't dwell on it, but on your agenda tonight, you do have the resolution declaring Earth Hour. That is something that we started four, five years ago, and it is a worldwide phenomenon where cities and governmental units and individuals all across the globe turn off all their lights for one hour, not all their lights, but turn off lights in recognition of reducing energy use. Millions of pounds of carbon are saved, and Ferndale's been a part of that each year, and I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, that you put that on the agenda.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Coming up soon.
Yep.
Second item, as a member of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission, I just want to thank you again for allowing us to do our work. You may remember back in December that we brought to council the idea or the, I guess the knowledge that our commission was sunsetting. We had started it about 11 years ago, and the Environmental Sustainability Commission has worked for 11 years, doing all sorts of outreach, doing the announcements here at the council meeting, putting on programs, advising council on environmental issues, and really working together with the city council and members of the community to make Ferndale an ever greener community. We do really want to have that commission renewed. As I mentioned, we brought it up in December, I think there was a 90-day renewal, we are at about that 90 days. So we are very eager to continue the work that we want to do. We will provide to the city anything they want. If it's just a mission statement, we can have that to you in a few days. I understand that, well, in any case, we would just like to encourage you to renew the commission so that we can officially continue our work. And then the third item has to do with, with my new position representing Jim Nash, who sends his greetings to the people of Ferndale. He's been in office for two months now, doing great work. The people up there are absolutely fantastic. As you may know, Commissioner Nash has been hosting town hall meetings across the county. We hope to, we plan to continue those town hall meetings, focusing on oil and gas drilling in Oakland County and the issue of fracking, which is hydraulic fracturing. We held our first town hall meeting in West Bloomfield Township about three weeks ago, and it was extremely successful. We filled the township hall with over 200 people. I bring this up because the issue is coming to us. You've read about the rush to drill for more oil and more natural gas in Ohio, in Pennsylvania, in states all around, and it is coming to Michigan in a big way. Last year, the state leased all of its public lands to open them up for oil and gas exploration, and we're just learning that the county is considering leasing all of its public lands for oil and gas exploration and possible fracking. So in that vein, the commissioner would like to hold our next town hall meeting here in Ferndale. The idea is we're going to move them all around the county, from the south end to the north end. We actually have five other townships and cities eager to host this, but I just wanted to let you know this, I've been in contact with Councilwoman Piana and also the city clerk, we'd like to host this here in City Hall because it is a town hall meeting. It's an educational forum, we bring in speakers from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, folks from environmental groups. We will invite someone from Jordan Exploration, which is the company buying these leases. So we'd like to do this in early April, and if, with your blessing, sir, I will speak to the city manager and see if we can set a date and a time, and Commissioner Nash would appreciate that. And by the way, it's been, the host would be Commissioner Jim Nash, be co-hosted by Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission and our county commissioner, Helene Zach.
Well, we'd be happy to host you here and also give Commissioner Nash our best because we know he's doing, you both are doing great things up there.
He's doing great.
Happy to have you.
He loves his position, he sends his greetings, and I'll take your greetings back to him.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address council and call to audience this evening?
Good evening, Chris Hughes, communications and marketing manager for the Ferndale DDA. I just wanted to do a teaser, we'll be back at your next meeting, to introduce the nine great winners we had at Main Street Oakland County on Friday night. Proud to say that downtown Ferndale picked up a pretty good percentage of the awards. There were 38 given, we got nine of them, and Pontiac got nine as well, in that vicinity. So between the two communities, we kind of cleaned up a little bit, but we're very happy about that, not to boast too much, but just quickly, run, a quick run-through, these are our great volunteers and businesses who make downtown Ferndale so great, put a lot of effort into their daily work to make our downtown the place where everybody wants to come. Our outstanding board member was Stacy Tobar, she was recognized by the county along with Volunteer of the Year, Scott Wright. Scott, you might remember, was pushing a bulldozer, putting up sculptures during the Art Town event. Outstanding promotional design piece was for Art Town, the exhibit, our brochure. Most creative sign, you might guess, Rust Belt Market. Rust Belt Market also received a very prestigious Outstanding Business of the Year, which we were hooting and hollering for. Valentine Distilling Company received outstanding private investment for the improvements they've made on their building. The Imperial Bar also received an award for Best Private Investment over $50,000, and outstanding public relations effort went to the Ferndale DDA. So we'll be back next time with all of our different winners and parade them along so you can see them, along with other great news from downtown Ferndale. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on all those awards.
And volunteer recruitment also.
Oh, and volunteer recruitment, for those who didn't, for those who didn't hear. Good evening.
Hi, Anne St. Peter, I own Pinwheel Bakery on Nine Mile. I just have a few questions about the parking. But first I want to say, I had to go to Royal Oak today, and I had to run into place really quick, I pulled up, there was a meter, put my change in, ran in, ran out, it was five minutes total. And I could use my credit card, that's, wow, this was so easy, it just really kind of stuck in my head how easy it was. And I know we're not going to change everything, but I just wanted to kind of point that out there, I was like, that was really simple. It wasn't buttons, it wasn't anything complicated. So, anyway, it just stuck in my head. So I have a couple of questions, probably more for April. The signage you might, you're going to post for the enforcing, the new hours until the end of April, is there a way to put them on the prompt screen on the units? So when people walk up there, it'll say?
Yes, we're going to try to actually put a sign on there because we don't want people to have to stand in line to find out if the parking is free, but yes.
What would it be like on the video, on the screen?
But it's also on the screen as well.
On the screen as well?
Yes.
And what about the meters? If they're not being, if you're not taking, if you're not charging people for the meters as well, there's been no signage for that. And we've gotten a lot of customers coming in and complaining that they put money in and then it says fail, and then they've, then they put more money in because they can't figure out why it's saying fail, there's no signage.
Well, the, the street meters should be actually collecting, it shouldn't say fail, so that means we actually have a problem with that particular meter. But in the meantime, we are going to put some signs along the street that says free parking because we did get a call on that too. We can't really bag them with 300 meters and they steal them. So we're going to do some signage that says free parking through March 24th on that as well. So, but if there is a.
Will that include the street meter parking?
Pardon?
Will that include the meter parking?
It will, yes. Yep, so we'll, we'll work through on signage on that as well.
Okay. And then I had just a couple of questions about the lighting that you're going to implement. If it's solar powered, how, how much of a charge do they hold? I mean, in the winter months, in the darker days, is it going to be seven o'clock at night and they kind of just get dimmer and dimmer? Is this something you don't know yet?
They're intended to, do you want me to answer?
Sure.
I mean, you're a technical, that's fine.
Yeah, the questions, I don't want her to have to wait.
Well, the solar allow, actually, as it's not being used, dims on purpose to reserve energy, but they have a battery that keeps them charged and it should, it gets, it should make it through the night.
What do you mean if it's not being used?
If, if it's quiet and it sleeps, it goes sleep, and that's why sometimes when you go to the machine, you have to touch it first.
I mean, the lights.
Well, but, no, those will stay on, yep, those will stay on, until we are going to have a timer, they'll say, whenever enforcement's done at 11:00, they will go off.
But those will be solar powered as well?
Yes, yep.
Those won't dim if they have enough energy or?
They will have enough power, correct. They will, they will remain on as we need them.
Okay, but they'll be able to collect enough?
Yes.
Energy to be able to sustain themselves?
Correct.
And then if you do turn the lights down at 8:00 because of, you know, the shorter hours, I kind of think that's going to make, it's going to be a little confusing for people because they're going to assume they still have to pay, they won't know, and then they'll walk up and it'll be dark, but they'll just assume that it's just dark there, you know?
Well, that's why we're putting a sign on the, on the machines.
Right, but if they don't, you know, it's just going to be a little confusing, I think, for people to, because they're not going to know until they go up there, and maybe they, you know, just take a while for them to figure out.
Sure.
But maybe leaving the lights on anyway so they can, the overhead light, the.
Oh, sure, we can look into that, understand.
The overhead light, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Michael Henness, DDA Chair. We support the decision to roll back the parking rates. Question, where will the passovers, current passovers be allowed to park?
We're going to look at the original places they were allowed to park and get them new maps.
And are we going to keep the rates the same for the on-street parking and the parking lots?
Yes.
Yes, yes, correct?
So both of them are going to be?
That is correct.
50 cents. That's correct. Jessica has some library news for us.
Well, library and also as a resident, first of all, the residential notice is that our fledgling Dale's neighborhood group is meeting this week at, at the Digital Learning Center Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:30. So anybody who lives in the boundaries of Woodward to Laverne or Eight Mile to Marshall is considered to be part of the Dale's and are welcome and invited to attend our meeting. And then in library news, I just wanted to mention that the Ferndale Reads Program is in full force right now, and we have some events this week. Wednesday night, we will have our Science Fiction Book Club discussing the book, which is Slaughterhouse Five by Kurt Vonnegut. And then right after the Science Fiction Book Club meeting, we'll be showing. And then, right after the Science Fiction Book Club meeting, we'll be showing the film. And then, every Thursday in March, Go Comedy will be doing a special show just for Slaughterhouse Five. And if you bring your library card, you get in for $5.
Wow.
And then, we'll have our big grand finale at the end of the month. So, if anyone has not gotten their book yet, please come to the library and get your book and your scheduled events.
Excellent. Thanks, Jac, Jessica. Appreciate it.
Hi, Emily Murray. I own Modern Natural Baby at 224 West Nine Mile. I was just, we're doing a little project at our store. We sell baby products, but we, one of our biggest products is cloth diapers, as most people know. But we're asking to people to bring us disposable diapers. We're buying them from them. We're going to do a project at our window. It's going to be a great statement, so we're excited about it. But we're buying, buying disposable diapers from people for 20 cents a piece. It's in-store credit that they have to use right at the time they bring them. If you don't need any baby products, you're welcome just to donate them to us. But we are buying them back. I know some people, they have kids that grow out of them, and they have some left. Their kid potty trains, they have some left. Or if you just want to start using cloth diapers, it's a great chance to start to do that, too.
Imagine that. When will the window be unveiled?
Oh, well, we have to collect enough diapers, so...
Of course.
We're hoping for April 20th. We have an event that day, and so we're hoping for that, but that, it's kind of, you know, that's just a little over a month, so we need a lot of diapers. So, anyway, just wanted to let everybody know that we're collecting disposable diapers. We're not taking swim diapers or pull-ups, but any size and brand other than that.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Janine Ingram. The journey to end cancer starts with a single step. The American Cancer Society invites you to take that step with us by joining the Global Relay for Life Movement. When you participate to end cancer at a relay event, it's your opportunity to not only honor cancer survivors and remember loved ones' loss, but also to raise awareness about what we can do to stay well from cancer and raise money to help fuel the world's largest walk to end cancer. We ask that you join us for the 2013 Relay for Life Ferndale Event kickoff hard, event Tuesday, March 19th at Ferndale High School. Registration and refreshments are at 6:00 PM and the informational program at 6:30. Learn how to become a volunteer, be honored as a cancer survivor or caregiver, bring your teammates and register your team, join one of the currently 16 existing teams, or become a member of the organizing committee. Learn why we love to relay and what it is, hear amazing speakers, and discover why you should be involved. The actual event of Ferndale's sixth annual relay is June 8th and 9th at the Ferndale High School football field. And for more information, you can contact our American Cancer Society representative, Marie Anne, at 248-663-3412, or you can go to the event website at www.relayforlife.org/ferndalemI. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Janine.
I totally forgot to mention that we're going to donate the diapers when we're done to families in need, so it's, it's a good cause. Sorry.
Good point. Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Mark McConnell, 2291 Woodward. Water rates. I opened up the bill the other day and noticed that, once again, they've gone up, and I've actually threw them on a file over the past five years, and the water rates have gone up almost 65% in five years. And considering we're the almost the highest tax community in Oakland County, I think enough's enough. So, I did call the city manager's office and was aware that maybe some water study or something's being done.
There is.
I haven't really been in the loop, just kind of doing our own thing, running the business, but I wanted to come down and say that, you know, I don't know how we can justify that percentage increase over five years.
Could you just briefly talk about the study and what the steps are?
Sure, we've just implemented or just went through an audit of the water fund, Water and Sewer Fund, and to confirm and, and understand why the rates have been increasing as they have. We're actually going to be providing that study to council next week, or next, March 25th at 7:30, so we encourage you, we're still kind of working through that right now, but there will be a discussion on there and where we are with the rates and things of that nature.
Okay, good enough.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. No one else wants to, whoops. Hope too soon. Could you give us your name?
Yes, sir. My name is Aaron Deluski. I'm a resident of Troy, 35 Olympia. I'm, I'm a volunteer at the Ferndale Bike Shop. I'm a blogger. I take care of their internet stuff. They're, they're not, the guys there aren't, aren't computer guys.
Gotcha. They're good at bikes, though.
I, I want, I want to, I want to, I want to express an opinion here to council. First, I got to say, this is a nice council room. It's, it's, it's well-lit, and everybody's involved, everybody, it's a large crowd here. It's kind of impressive. It's kind of neat. Anyhow, so, yeah, Ferndale, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Anyways, like I said, I want to express an opinion about the parking, the parking plus systems. I, I had wrote this on the Ferndale page, I just, I, and I reread it, and I figured I'd like to, I'd like you to hear it. Anyways, this is how it goes. I don't drive, I don't drive, but my mom does. She's a regular here in town. She's a, she's in her mid-60s, and so, I, I, my soul frowns when I think of the problems and the confusions you'll face when dealing with the parking plus systems. She doesn't know how to use computers, and she doesn't text. I, I hope, I hope a better system is put into place for, for the non-computer fold. Anyway, that's that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Good evening, Dennis.
That is Austin, 1550 Spencer. I've got a question. How much time does the parking enforcement allow from the time that people go to their parking spaces through these meters, when they are, when you guys get these problems all ironed out here? I mean, because I'm sure, just like myself, over the past quite a few years that I've been in Ferndale, I pulled into any one of these parking lots here one time or another, and parking enforcement's either there or coming in right ahead of me or behind me or something. Okay.
That seemed like it.
So, well, you know, the point is, they're out doing their job and that. Now, we're having all, you know, well, the city's having all these problems with the parking meters, these new ones. Now, after what I told you guys at the last meeting, you know, about the worn-out numbers and that that I seen in Royal Oak, now, what happens if the situation comes, and it's going to happen to somebody, probably one of you guys, me, or anybody else out here, how much time is parking enforcement going to allow people to go from their car and finally get their money in the meter or their credit card in that meter? What is the time lapse in that before they get a ticket? I've not heard anything about that, and I mean, I don't even hear nothing in Royal Oak about that.
The chief likes to take that. He's in charge of parking enforcement?
We actually have, I mean, that's a very good question because we've actually discussed that.
It is a good question, yes.
And the parking enforcement officers, their tactic will be is that if they have a group of people at that particular lot, they have to check individually their handheld to make sure that that lot has not been paid for, but if they have a lineup, they're going to actually go to the folks and say, hey, they should have already remembered their four-digit number, and they're going to write down the four-digit number so they won't issue those to vehicles parking tickets. So, we've already discussed that with the PTOs to make sure that, we do our best to make sure that doesn't happen.
That's a great answer and a good question. Your second question, Chief, though, is, are you guys following Dennis around?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Dennis. All right. Anyone else for public comment? We got about two more minutes. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is moved from the consent agenda. Let me read the consent agenda this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 25th, 2013. B is the approval of an agreement with Superior Environmental Corp. of Bay City to provide Class A and B operators for the underground storage tank system located at the DPW Yard. C is the approval to purchase a new concrete breaker from Michigan Cat of Novi at a cost of $7,220 charged to the motor pool expense. D, approval of a resolution authorizing travel for council members Martin and Piana to attend the Michigan Municipal League's 2013 Capitol Conference in April in Lansing, Michigan. You guys take real exotic trips. E, approval to fill up, up to six Public Works Grade One positions as submitted by our Human Resources Director. F, approval to fill two vacant Public Works leader positions. G, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support. Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Any discussion on any of those items? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
It's council members Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is appointments to the Downtown Development Authority. And I guess I'll introduce that item. The appointments to the DDA are mayoral appointments with the consent and approval of council, and I have for your consideration, two, two names for you to consider this evening. Ferndale is very fortunate to have many talented people willing to volunteer in a lot of capacities in our community, including on these boards as well. And two individuals who I think have outstanding credentials have expressed an interest in being on the board, and I believe, I'm sorry, you didn't have their applications last Thursday, but I believe everyone on council has them now. The two individuals are Tom Shapler, who is the Vice President and COO of Credit Union One, and Chris Johnston, who owns three businesses in our downtown, including Emory, the WAB, and The Loving Touch. He also is the founder of the DIY Festival in town, and those are my recommendations for the DDA. Are there questions of council? No questions, comments, and otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I move to confirm the appointments, Tom Shapler?
Shapler, actually.
Shapler?
Yeah.
And Chris Johnston to the Ferndale Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors for terms ending December 31st, 2016. And with that said...
Is there, I need a support.
Sorry.
It's been moved by Piana. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Martin. All right, comments, questions?
I would just like to say, I'm really excited for Chris Johnson to come back to the DDA board. When I was a volunteer for four or five years, I had the opportunity to see him work at the table on the board, and so I think he's a great addition, and welcome his return.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Moving on to item B, consideration of a resolution supporting Earth Hour and establishing March 23rd, 2013 as Earth Hour Day. And as mentioned before, I'd like to thank previous Mayor Covey, who has been a champion of that issue. Let me just remind folks when the time and date are, and I'm looking in my, if someone has it before me, feel free.
March 23rd.
March 23rd, for what hour?
8:30 to 9:30.
Thank you. 8:30 to 9:30. We ask you that you turn out your lights in deference to Mother Earth, right?
It's after the parking, so...
Yeah. After parking, thank you, Craig. Appreciate that. Any discussion on this item? If not, madam, oh, I need a motion.
I would move that we adopt the resolution supporting Earth Hour and establishing March 23rd, 2013 as Earth Hour Day in the city of Ferndale.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Additional comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Item C, consideration of ordinance number 1138, amending Chapter Three, Alcoholic Beverages, Article One, in general, Section Three through Four, consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages on public highways, streets, and public places in the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. And Dan, do you want to...
Yes, Your Honor, I'd be happy to introduce this item. This comes back to council. It was on your last council agenda, and the council indicated that it wished for additional clarification, particularly as it relates to the requirement that, in the context of any type of lease that would allow for alcohol on a city-owned property where the lease was with a governmental entity, that, that additional approval of council would be required in connection with such utilization or, or use of alcohol. The, the first change that I don't believe was a problem at all at the last meeting was to allow, in, in the context of a special event, for alcohol to be allowed on public property within the area designated by council as, as being appropriate for such use in the special event approval.
Any questions of council?
No, I think this adequately addresses our concerns for most time.
I, I agree. We talked about it extensively at the last meeting, and I'm crystal clear now what it's for and what it's not for.
This is exactly, I was looking for. Exactly the clarity we were looking for, is that what you're saying? We thought Scott was going to have to come back and explain it to us, but, yeah, Chris did a fine job. A motion would be in order.
I would move that we approve ordinance 1138, amending Chapter Three, Alcoholic Beverages, Article One, in general, Section Three, Four, consumption, consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages on public highways, streets, and public places of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Any additional comments, questions on this item? Now, Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That ordinance is adopted. Now, item D, consideration of a request to allow alcohol at the Ferndale Public Library for two special events. Who's introducing that item?
I'm going to let Jessica do it.
Literally, Jessica could. You want to just come up and tell us what the two events are? Oh, or Patrick Dengate is also here. You are the chair?
Evening, yes.
Yes, chair of the board. I'm losing track.
President of the Library Board, trustee.
Sorry about that.
We call ourselves presidents, according to state law, we're presidents. Yeah, I'm here on behalf of the Library Board and the Friends of Ferndale Library, and Jessica Kaiser, who's already been up to the podium once, is here, our director, as well as some other members of the board, Judeen Bartos, our Vice President, Monique Kerzig, and our newest member, Adrian Gilmore, who's sitting at the end there.
Oh, I thought I recognized you. Congratulations on your appointment.
Well, I'm just here to, in person, do what I've done in writing already, is request permission to, uh, serve alcohol in the library on a couple of... At a couple of different events coming up in April and May. One is the Festival of Books and Roses, which takes place on St. George's Day, on or around St. George's Day. We've done that in the past.
That's the one you had a license for last year, correct?
Yes, correct. And then, uh, in, um... In May is gonna be the Metro Times Blowout, which is a musical event that takes place in Detroit-Hamtramck and then this year in Ferndale. So, uh, fundraising is really critical for the library. We raised a lot of funds. Um, we did a survey last year and got opinions from people in the community and they really favored fundraising as a... As a good way, as opposed to, like, raising taxes to help fund additional things at the library. So, um, we've made that part of our strategic plan and we've done quite well. We've raised a lot of money. Um, the Friends were able to donate a considerable amount of money to the library and I think it was at the...
At the last meeting, yep.
Last meeting where one of the great big giant checks was presented and we have a, uh, a great program with the high-demand books that people can come in, multiple copies, so those monies funded that. So, um, I respectfully request again that the council grant us permission to, um, serve alcohol at these two events this year. And I don't know if Jessica has anything to add, but... Okay.
Just council of questions, Patrick?
Um, Your Honor, if I may...
Yes.
In the, um... You... At the end of the memo says you request the City Council's authorization for serving of alcoholic beverages. Provided a one-day MLCC, I assume liquor license, is delivered and posted at the event and other stipulations noted in the resolution. Which resolution are you referencing?
These letters were based on the communication to council last year and it's my understanding that there was a resolution to allow this to take place. But I don't know the mechanism which the council's gonna use.
What do you think about that language, Dan?
Well, last year there was a resolution and that was the purpose for the change in the ordinance. So, that language really should be struck as it relates to a resolution because now the ordinance's...
We just changed the ordinance to allow you to do that.
Just five minutes ago.
That's correct. So, why don't we, um, strike that language?
Thank you for the clarification.
And if someone made a motion, they could move it minus that language. It would be great.
I would move that we approve the request to allow alcohol at Ferndale Public Library for the two special events listed in the request, less amended language.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Any other, uh, questions or comments on that item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmembers Piana...
Yes.
Lennon...
Yes.
Galloway...
Yes.
Martin...
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We invite you, uh, to, uh, come to these events.
I will be there. Thank you. Dan says he's gonna be there. All right. That concludes our regular agenda. Next item is, uh, call to council. What happened to... What am I missing? Well, the call to council starts with the police chief. That's right. Uh, the police chief, you wanna... You have anything you wanna share for the good of the city this evening?
I have two things, Your Honor. First off, uh, I'm sure, uh, Councilman Lennon realizes that this weekend is one of the big weekends of the year and we would like to invite all of our leprechauns to the city of Ferndale. Please behave yourselves and that we will be out in force watching to make sure that you don't drink.
Get with me later and refresh my memory.
I'm sure that you will.
This is like bigger than New Year's Eve in town, right? I mean...
It is bigger than New Year's Eve in town. This is.
So, be careful.
But it's a fun night, but we just stress that we want our visitors to be safe and to please, if you overdrink, please, uh, get yourself a ride home from a sober individual. It is also one of the big nights for drunk driving arrests.
Yep, and it's very serious.
Um, the other thing I wanna bring to the council's attention is last night, uh, the untimely death of our, um, chaplain coordinator, Ken Koppick, passed away very unexpectedly. Uh, he, uh... There was... There was, uh, no inclination of this whatsoever. Yeah, he was transported to Beaumont Hospital in Troy where he passed away. Uh, he is... He's been with us for about five years. He has done a lot of great work for us. He's coordinated our program. Uh, we're very saddened by it. We, of course, will participate in his funeral with the Honor Guard and other different amenities that we can support the family with. Anyone that knew Ken or would like to visit his visitation will be at, uh, the Price Funeral Home in Troy, Thursday, 4 to 8, and Friday, 2 to 8, if... For visitation. The funeral is Saturday at 9:30 at the Rochester Hills Baptist Church where he was. That was his, uh... Where he was the pastor of that church.
Thanks. I'm very sorry to hear that, Chief. Thanks for sharing that. Uh, the fire chief, anything for the good of the city this evening?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. We had recently, um, a case in a multi-dwelling where, um, an elderly person was burning their food when they're prepping it. And so the owner of the facility and other people in the building were concerned and had come to us and asked for help. One of the problems is at no time did anyone ever call the fire department when this facility was smoking. So, we have no reports or anything on it. So, whenever people that live in multiple dwellings have issues, they really should call the fire department so we can investigate it and report it properly. So, if someone does need assistance or guidance or social service intervention, we can do it before it becomes a serious problem or a fatality. So, I just remind everybody, uh, you're not really snitching on your neighbors. It is a serious thing to have fires going and if someone were to forget or that... And then maybe something's wrong with the person, too. I mean, maybe they've passed out. So, please call the fire department when you smell smoke in your building. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate it. Jill, anything from recreation this evening?
I have a question, Jill.
All right. Fair enough.
One quick announcement. Um, coming up on Saturday, March 23rd, is our annual Extravaganza Egg Hunt, um, at the Kulak Center at 1:00 PM for ages 12 and under. It is $3. Kids will be split into each, um, each specific groups and hunt for eggs throughout the Kulak Center and at the Kulak Center grounds. Um, and we will be having a special visitor. The Easter Bunny will be, um, there as well and be available for pictures. Um, so we hope to see everyone out. It is sure to be an excellent time. Thank you.
And hang on, because I knew you were gonna go there, though.
I have to.
I just have a quick question. Several years ago, we booked that concession stand at Martin Road, which became a storage unit. Anything in the plans for that, uh, in the near future for its intended use? I mean, I just saw in the paper where Berkeley's, uh, taking RFPs to lease their out. Leasers... Leasers out, so... That might be something you and April might wanna discuss.
Yeah.
Make some counsel. That's, you know, it's a revenue, um, opportunity.
Definitely for our... We have leagues out there.
Leagues out there, yeah. You go seven nights a week, so... Okay? Thanks, Jill.
Yep.
Have an excellent time. Jill, anything from HR this evening? I'm sorry, Jenny. I just... Jill was waving and I'm looking at her as your... Jenny, Jenny Longthorn, our HR.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Really excited to report that we were able to hold our third Weight Watchers session, which began last week. Um, in total, for the first two sessions that we held, our team has lost over 500 pounds. Um, and so we have 15 participants in this program. We'll go 12 weeks out and we're really excited for it. Thank you for the support.
Congratulations. That's great. That's awesome. Joe, anything from the Chief Innovation Officers Department this evening?
Uh, Mayor, just an announcement that we have achieved 1,000 followers on the city's Facebook page in our first year. And also, uh, on that social media, we will be expanding it to include our launch of our first YouTube channel. That launch will be taking place this week and the first video will be a how-to operational video to help people understand how to better use the Park Plus Pay Station machines. We will also be using the cable... We'll also be using the cable to help us launch more promotional and educational materials for city services, uh, moving towards the future.
Excellent. Thank you. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
I gotta throw something in there. I don't wanna break the streak.
Right.
Uh, just wanted to remind the residents that yard waste pickup will begin again on April 1st.
Sure sign of spring, right there.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Cheryl Lynn, anything from the city clerk's office this evening?
I hate to be the one to break the trend. Um...
Okay.
I guess I will just remind folks that we've got, uh, six vacancies on library board and, believe it or not, um...
On library board?
We're on library board. I'm sorry, five. Five of the sixes. Will be up for election and nominating petitions.
Oh, so then that vacancies would be on for election? I saw Patrick saying what?
I...
Four up for...
Either five. I think you're the only one who's not up for election. I believe she does. So, anyway, petitions are due in May. So, if you, uh...[1486.84]